Open the meeting, we always open the meeting with a invocation and a pledge. All stand please. Chris.
My Father, who art in heaven, we're gathered here today, asking you to bless and reside over us, each and every one of us. Thank you for allowing us to have traveling grace and the mercy that you have bestowed upon us today. We ask you to be with us in our coming and goings, be with this council, help us, help us and guide us in our decision makings tonight. Thank you. Amen.
I plead allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to thank everybody for coming tonight. Moving into comments from the audience or council? No comments? Council?
Comment from the council. I again want to extend an invitation to the community roundtable that will be held for precinct three on May Tuesday, May 27th at 5:30 PM. Location will be at the Crockett ISD Administration Auditorium on 1400 West Austin Street, and it will be in the rear part. So please come out and express your concerns or assist us with helping you fix issues that are becoming to this city. So that's my invitation.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number one, special sessions, May 9th, 2025.
Okay, before approval of minutes, you got a question? Before approval of minutes, the, on the last minutes, I believe I had a conversation with Mr. Angerstein and had addressed some concerns about the canvassing, not the process, I just had some concerns of an issue that had came about, and I brought it to the attention of Mr. Angerstein, also Ms. Cynthia Long, so now I'm bringing attention to the council, so you'll be aware. But I did ask Ms. Cynthia Long to submit a response to my concern, and I did go, I spoke with her, and she stated that she sent the response to Ms. Stefka, and so I was assuming that it would have been documented or documented in with the canvassing, because she did state that she would submit the response. So with that being said, was that response submitted or?
Can you remind us what the response was? I mean, what you?
What the concern was? Okay. The concern was, we had an issue with one of the machines, with the, yeah, with the ballot, with one of the machines, it was reported to me that one of the voters had went in to vote, and when they went in to vote, they did not get, and they lived inside, they resided inside the city limits, and they did not get the mayor, mayoral candidate on their ballot. Also, instead of getting that, they received the schools districts, and they were not supposed to be voting for anyone in the school district. So that was a concern that was brought to me, so I wanted to make sure that was noted. I did talk with Ms. Cynthia Long, and I did do understand that they do a good job at their, at their department, and that I wanted it documented, because if this happens again, we will be able to, in the future, reflect back and see if this was, I mean, accidental and how we can respond to this incident, how we can make sure that all the votes are counted and they're counted accurately, and this won't, this issue won't happen again. So how we go about getting that response placed in the minutes?
So in our speaking to Ms. Long, it was documented in her records, so one person went in, voted, and then mentioned after the ballot was turned in.
Correct.
And so we are aware that there was one ballot, one number, or one vote that was not recorded with the mayor, the mayoral proposition, or candidates on the ballot. And they caught, after going in and looking at it, there was two others that turned it in, it was all in the same, it was surrounding a ballot issue. So when those persons were registered at the front, sign in, they were given the wrong ballot. And so they caught the problem with the other two. They pulled up the system and found that no other ballots had been given out like those. And so it only applied to those three, two of which were caught, and they correctly gave them the correct ballot before they actually went and voted. And then there was one, one number, or one ballot that was improperly voted, provided, and then they, when they submitted it, there's no way to back that. So one note, one vote was noted in her certification. And so my understanding is, in the election records, that would, that was, that's documented, and it was corrected before anybody else voted, and there was no other issues. As far as the canvas or anything like that, I don't know how that would affect, I'm not aware of it affecting this. If it, if a certification was provided to us, and she, and her records show that there was one vote off, I guess it would have been an issue if we were closer to.
I mean, if it was close, they could have, they could have.
And I did review it, and it was, it was, it was actually one, one, one number off. The city was off one, and the school district was off one. So, so the person that was allowed to vote for a school district was not allowed to vote for a mayoral candidate. So it evened it out, but it, so that means it canceled that vote, basically, if you would think about it, I guess. I don't, I don't know, I don't know how we would address that. But I just wanted to make it known because of the fact that it does need to be documented, because for future references. So if an incident like this happens again, we can go back and review and see if it's, what was causing the issue, because we want to make sure that we're accurate on our counts. This, I mean, voting is very, very important, and it's a very touchy issue, so.
Okay. As far as the minutes, I think this works with just the, as long as she, she has it documented.
Kind of get a motion on, yeah, one special.
So we needed, okay. So, so will her response be in this, included in this meeting?
It's a, it's a, it's a public document, I mean, it's a public record, we have it recorded, her response to us in certification that there is one with her notes about that one ballot.
Right, will it be noted in this, in this?
It wasn't part of that meeting here, it was just the canvas.
Just noted.
Okay, yeah, okay, I understand that.
We have it as a public record, yes ma'am.
Okay, because I know that when I talked with Ms. Cynthia, she stated that she only keep, she has a record retention, period, and once she disposed of those records, it's no longer there. So I want to make sure that it's documented here, so for future references or historical references, so we'll be able to look back and see.
I don't know how to document it, other than if we put it on the agenda, speak on it, address it, and record it for, in the minutes. And if you want, we can do that.
Our request that be done, because I would rather be transparent.
Yes ma'am.
And be noted than not to be there to where if someone needs to go back and refer to it, you know, so it'll be there, yeah.
So I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for the special session. That was May 9th, 2025.
I second that motion.
All in favor? Okay, item number two, Police Department Manpower Criminal Incident Report for April 2025. I think our police chief is out for a conference training, so I think John's gonna.
And you do, we have his report in y'all's package.
He, he let everybody know that he'll be gone this week, this whole week, but he would be by his phone if we needed. Is there any, anybody, any questions on it, or? Everybody good? Kind of get a motion?
There's no motion.
Oh, no motion, okay.
We can go.
All right. Okay, item number three, Fire Department Monthly Activity and Status Report, April 2025. Hello, Jason?
For the month of April, we had a total of 51 calls. Breaking those down, 35 of them in the city, we moved the fire, and 16, okay, calls within a time period, and trying to, there's pretty much a fire in the town, which brings our total, I said, a total of 51 for the month. It's a total breakdown, kind of, I have questions.
Any questions for our fire chief? Everybody good? Good job, bud. Okay, item number four, this is lengthy, so I'm gonna do something a little different. Public hearing on request from Kelvin Investments and Inc., and everything described below. I'm gonna open a public hearing on everything described below, and John will give a overview on it, so open the public hearing now.
Mayor, Council Public, we had a P and Z meeting today where this was also brought to them. I have a copy of the planning and zoning and their action. They recommended approval of the requested zone change in a four to zero, four to zero vote. I have a couple documents that I'll show you. So this is the area that's going to be included in the zone change. There's, as you can see here, there's four parcels, each of these are separate parcels. These, this company has come in and purchased all four of them, and they're wanting all of them with like, like zoning classification. If you look, if you look right here, as you can see, as, since 2006, when our zoning map was adopted, some of those parcels have changed in, in shape and boundaries. So I'll show you here side by side with this one, why this is being required. So all of this property here that is currently manufacturing, we're good, they're good on. There's a piece of property across here that they purchased that is R3, that is leftover from the R3, George Briggs, End of Rose, Rose, the new project, a housing authority project here. So all of this was zoned R3 at that time. This red area is all zoned as C2, planned commercial, which is offices and professional buildings and small retail, but truck stops are not allowed. These investors are wanting to put, basically right in the center of this red, and some of this purple, which delineates manufacturing, they're wanting to put a big truck stop. And so, since it overlaps, since their current parcels overlap, as it's recorded, we want it recorded all correctly and not with overlapping zones, so this can be properly updated. We've also addressed an issue with our county clerk's office and the appraisal district, to where in the future, as parcels are sold or subdivided, or the boundaries are changed, that it would require coming through our planning and zoning to be able to be properly recorded, so we can update our files as well. And so, so that's kind of where we're at right now with, we have three different zones. All of this is properly developed for industrial or manufacturing, however, we have a mixture of residential, R3, C2, and manufacturing. And so that was, that's the, the driving need for them to request the zone change, so it's all, all the same, to allow them for, you know, building the truck stop. This is a time for questions, this is also a time, if anyone, any of the neighboring property owners can speak for or against the zone change during the P and Z public hearing, there were no one, there was no one that came to speak for or against the, the zone change. Comments from council? You can ask questions during the public hearing, but if we're gonna do certain things, we can, we're gonna have the actual agenda item to discuss, and so I can address questions, if you want, here or there.
Okay, my question, I do, I do have a question. I think we've already kind of been through this. So when you have committees, things like this that come before the committee, when, when, when are we notified that you have items like this that comes before the committee? In other words, like the P and Z committee, they got the zoning, and they started, they went through, they voted on zoning, so when does that come to council? Does it come after the fact, or?
Well, planning and zoning has to review it, they can make changes, amendments, require special conditions, so the items that I bring to council are not prepared until planning and zoning has gone through the process of their review, speaking with the owners, seeing that it, that if it meets the requirements or the intent of our zoning ordinances. So things change fairly frequently, and then we finalize that and bring that to council for, for their final approval based on planning and zoning's recommendations.
Okay, so my, my question is, like the initial, so we don't know anything about the businesses that are coming in to the, to the city, until after they went to the committee?
In a lot of ways, yes ma'am. In a lot of ways, competitively, we're not allowed to pass on information from prospective businesses, businesses that are.
To council?
Yes ma'am, in a public meeting, yes ma'am, for sure.
No, 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 I understand a public meeting.
Yeah, and so there's not, there's not really a process unless it fits the executive exemptions for closed session.
So, I mean, that's what I'm saying, so this would fit an executive?
No, this is a public hearing, this is a public.
No, 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 not this one, right here.
Especially while we have.
Then, I mean, the initial, I'm talking about at the very beginning. So, I mean, if we're to make these decisions, I mean, should we not know what businesses are coming in to the city, where they're planning to be? I mean, it's.
To some degree, if it's.
It's like a economic development, right? I mean, it's.
No ma'am, not at all. So these, so this companies, they're not asking for monies, they're not asking for anything that would require negotiations, like executive session, closed session negotiations. This is a for-profit company, wanting to come in and invest into our community. Currently, our zoning is outdated, our zoning map that's specific to this area is, does not fit this investor's proposal.
Okay.
And so this information, all of this, after going through P and Z and preparing it, like, the soonest I got it was, you know, last week around Thursday, so that's when I sent it out to you, to you guys.
What I'm saying is.
So this is not.
You knew, you knew about.
On Thursday, when I sent it to you.
No, 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 you knew that they were prepared, that they were preparing it, correct? That's what I'm asking, I'm just asking, I'm just asking the process, I guess.
So that's the process, so the process, if there's, this, for instance, this property that you're looking at, it's sold and changed hands several times for prospective investors.
Okay.
So if I would have made this into a public ordeal, you opened it into more investors seeing that, that's not, that's not the intent of what we're doing, so.
That's not my intent, my questioning, my questioning is, do, when do we, because they've cut.
Tonight, we know it's tonight.
Thursday, when I posted.
Tonight.
Oh, so we don't, so we don't know about.
That's why we have planning and zoning.
But you, but the investor has came and spoken with you?
No ma'am.
Not at all?
I saw him today for the first time, for the first time I saw him today. I think that was him, it wasn't.
I saw him a year and a half ago.
This is not, this is not a process that, it's not a public process, this is, this is private properties where somebody wants to come in and make an investment, so they don't, they don't delve a lot of their information. Up until Thursday, here's where, here's one piece of information that I was gonna share tonight. The only thing that we got, where did I put it? So as of last Thursday, once we got their name, and they actually, up until then, it just said truck stop. Actually, it didn't say truck stop, it said T-stop, and we just guessed that it would probably be a truck stop. So that's the, that's all the limited information that we get. And so once we found out the actual name of it, they told us the other sites that they have, so some of the other truck stops that they've developed, I think this is our fifth one. And so all of this information I got on Thursday, when I put this agenda together and was sending it out to council. That's the process that I currently have, I have no other process.
So the, so the council knows after the fact?
The same time, the same time I do, and we all do.
That's just the same thing with take five out there.
I didn't know anything about take five.
I didn't either.
Nobody knew, nobody knew.
Who would, who would want to know?
We're not in a situation to have, to have city backdoor conversations, or city leaders dictating who comes and who doesn't come. We are open, we're an open market, and so if somebody purchases a piece of property and says, hey, I want to put a truck stop here, then as I get that information, I bring it to y'all, and y'all decide, do we want to approve this? Essentially, by not approving this, what could happen is they can move over, they can still put this truck stop here, but it best works for their plan to put it in this location where partial zoning requirements need to be provided for, you know, it needs to be amended partially.
Yeah, my, I'm just, my, just main concern is that seems like a lot of information that we're getting, than I'm getting, I don't know about everybody else, I can just speak for me, is I'm getting it on the back end, I'm not getting on the front end.
We were all getting it.
Yeah, so.
I got this information as we put the agenda together, when I, you know, and that's, and as soon as I had, when we posted the agenda, that's when I met with you in person, we went over this in detail. That's all the information I have, I have no other information.
And I questioned you at that time, so.
Yes ma'am.
Okay.
And I, I gave the answer then, too. I don't, I don't know.
Myself, I did.
Okay. We got anybody to speak for or against? Go ahead.
And so it needs to be property owners that are on that list?
Okay.
Sorry. We can, we can ask, it is a public hearing, so you can ask questions, but as far as speaking for or against, would probably be, yeah, so.
I get it, everybody? I was just asking, like you said, if he were to move it over, I don't want the housing authority residents to get cut out of property, you know, for a major change. So if the planning and zoning committee can do the zoning without cutting, you know, the residential area, and.
Okay, so let's, let me pull it up to see what you're talking about here.
The yellow part is residential.
And so, yes ma'am, this is what's developed as the housing authority, so they're not, they're not going to change any of that.
And so the yellow part, like behind it, that's the houses that's coming close to Fourth Street, right?
There's no, this is all being used as a crockett ready mix, probably up to about right here, and so some of this bottom corner of the yellow is their property, and it's all open field right now.
Okay.
But all of this, and in by our zoning ordinance, the boundaries in between the residential and industrial or manufacturing requires screening fencing, so it, it needs to be, to some degree, like sound barrier proofing, brick, wood, a nice, not a chain link fence even, but a nice visual, visual and sound barrier.
Right, because we had boundaries, like, there was a business put on the backside of our property, and they didn't send the notices out, so that's why I'm trying to figure out, you know, to make sure that the residents know about the business and know the boundaries, and that it would be zoned correctly.
Right, with, with that property, it was already zoned as commercial, so it didn't require this process, but I definitely see your, to not be surprised by what's moving into you, but it was already zoned commercial there, but it does require visual screening and sound, sound screening.
Okay, thank you.
Go ahead.
Regally, I did not look at this as well. The only thing, if I may approach here, Mr. Mayor, go down. If you're looking at, this is the expansion for the housing, this particular area, and you've got now they're wanting to be in this particular area. I asked that, have we put in regarding for the people who are going to live there, the children and so forth, with this type of noise that's coming in, it seemed like it prospered not only the city, but also this development that moved closer to this particular area versus where you're gonna have housing. Even though they did put up fences and so forth, so you've got 50-foot lights, they're gonna be streaming in the back of people's yards and so forth.
They're, they're not allowed to point towards other properties, so, but.
And you don't, and you don't know that, but, you know, I'm just bringing about just some observations that I, that I've seen with this, not fully recognizing this, you also had the sand pit on one side, you're looking at already the, the community property or the housing property, kind of already, kind of a pickle with this situation. Now we have something else with noise all night.
Do you live in this area? Do you live in this area?
No, but I can, I can look at a map and say.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Will this bring value to the surrounding properties?
Of course.
An incredible amount of value.
Yeah, of course.
This is a multimillion dollar truck stop, providing, providing jobs and lots of fuel and sales tax revenue. Just to comment, because this is not, you know, we're not trying to shut anything down, but this, across this line here, this is where that, where, where the truck stop will be, in, right here in the center of this, all of this area is already developed for a storm drainage, there's a big storm drainage ditch, causing everything to be offset and pushed back from a lot of, a lot of the housing area that y'all are talking, you know, that we've, that's been brought up. So that'll be some distance and visual from it. This is the site plan that they sent to us here, so it's gonna, as you see, this creek area right here, that goes on back, and so this is gonna be up closer to the road, it's not abutting the backside of the housing authority. But this is all the information I have at this, at this time.
Okay, do we have anybody else speak for or against?
Robicide Morse Transmission.
Yeah.
Robicide Morse Transmission.
Kind of in between the old Mobile Home Place and Morse Transmission. Okay, about to close it, anybody else? All right, item number five, consider approval of zoning district changes for precinct, or for partial 28325 and partial 11827 as described above. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the zoning change. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the zoning change.
I'll say it.
All approved? Motion passed. Uh, item number six, consider and approve nominations and appointments to new board members to the charter review commission.
Mayor, having your packet, you know, the three board members. Um, the nominations for three board members and the members that they're, uh, replacing. Nominations for James Henry, Joseph James, and Thomas Shelley, replacing Pam Wells, Christopher Price, and Lois Ball.
Do we have a motion?
I make a motion to accept nominations for changes to the charter committee.
I second. Okay, all approved? All, all of them?
All, all four?
All, all four?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. Okay, item number seven, consider and approve an ordinance amending the code of ordinances as described below.
Mayor and council, I have, this is pretty lengthy, so I have a summary that I, I printed off, and, uh, it's on an extra sheet beside each, each one of you. Is it that, I believe? So, that's the summary, and I also attached, um, a copy of the, let me get you one. Also attached a copy of the state statute. So, the state statute updated their definitions, as this is a, a fast-changing field, apparently, coin operator machines and amusement redemption machines, and our, uh, our ordinance was, uh, behind and, uh, did not reflect the same definitions as the state, and we were having some issues. We went through and clarified that by addressing these ordinance amendments, and so the thr- the three initial things that this addressed with coin operator machines are amusement redemption machines, gaming computers, and game, game, game room, game, gaming computer type situations are no longer excluded from the definition of coin operator machines per state statute. This is a technical correction based on state law and the state comptroller's office guidelines that an amusement redemption machine, or ARM, is a type of coin operated machine and may therefore be subject to the city's occupation tax on a coin operated machine. And I attached the occupations code for that. Nonprofit organizations are exempt from the coin operated machine occupation tax, they will now be required to provide a copy of the state comptroller's written notice verifying such exemption. So, if you have one, the state already provides that exemption, a certification saying that you are an exempt entity that qualifies and your machine is exempt. And I'll talk a little bit about that. Um, based on state law and current city go- code, eligible nonprofits are exempt from the annual state and city coin operated machine occupation tax, sixty dollars per machine for state tax, and fifteen for city tax, fifteen dollars. Whenever a nonprofit organization applies to the state comptroller's office for an exemption from this tax, the state comptroller provides the organization with a written notice confirming the eligibility. That way, we don't, we don't have a process to define and certify eligibility, nonprofit status, and things of that nature. Um, requiring a copy of this notice will ensure that the city is not making the decision whether or not they're exempt, but the state makes that decision. It's a decision that they already make and will accept their decision. And it cross-references the zoning code relating to coin operated machines and to the ARM ordinance, um, those have been added. Uh, the current zoning code contains limitations regarding placement of coin operated machines within three hundred feet of a church, school, or hospital, and the city code relating to ARMs contains several additional requirements relating only to ARMs and not coin operated machines. Adding these cross-references to these provisions will ensure that these provisions are not overlooked when enforcing city ordinances. The second two things that this, that this ordinance does is involving, that's, that's coin operated machines, the bottom two are amusement redemption machines, or the game rooms establishments. It allows eligible nonprofit organizations to be exempt from the ARM establishment licensing and inspection fee, which is currently one thousand per ARM, per, per amusement redemption machine per year. Uh, the exemption will only, will apply only to nonprofit organizations, providing the city with a copy of the bu- above referenced comptroller's notice. So, if they have that notice that they're exempt, then they'll fall under our exemption as well if we approve the ordinance as it's written. Currently, the exempt, the nonprofit, um, for instance, the American Legion, our, our American Legion Hall has amusement redemption machines that were currently, we're waiting on, on a determination from council to decide how to proceed with theirs. Um, that's a, a big source of revenue, and it's to their, it, um, it's not, uh, open to the public, you, you're, have to be a dues paying member, you know, and, um, they can, they can better manage themselves, um, and they would qual- qualify for being exempt from those fees instead of having to pay, they already would be able to exempt themselves from the state fee, uh, s- uh, tax, and this, this would further exempt them from the city's, um, amusement redemption machine tax or, or fee of a thousand dollars per year per machine. Um, and an ARM license for an organization, other than a nonprofit organization, will only be granted, uh, for an ARM that has a current state comptroller's tax permit. Um, we don't really have the personnel or the ability to manage and oversee and go, you know, door to door to all the gas stations or different, um, areas that have these machines, and that will require that, um, the, but the state also has the ability, and it aligns with city's oversight. Currently, uh, currently, there's some machines that don't have the state's licensing or certification, and, so we're not going in there trying to police or verify that, are they registered with the state, call the state and, and, you know, and report them to the state. Um, we will only provide that, uh, licensing or registration if they have a state license and registration, which there's already a process, a longstanding process for that. That's, that's the best, about the best I can bring this, you know, as far as what, what this ordinance does. Um, it's just a lot of obscurity between these machines going in and around, uh, town and us trying to know whether they're legally placed, placed or not. And we found out that the state already has a process for oversight of that, and so, that way, we're not approving something that the state hasn't approved. Cause they're supposed to report and, and, you know, pay a tax, um, and a, you know, a fee for that.
I, I personally, um, I would have to do a little bit more research, um, cause we did discuss this, but, um, yeah, um, I would have to do a little more research for me to get a better understanding on how we need to move forward with this. So, with that being said, I would just, um, say that we, uh, postpone, uh, voting on this tonight, bring it back to our next meeting, um, put on the next agenda, and, um-
It's up to council.
It's just to go by what the state does?
Yeah.
Is that what you want? This is what the state-
Now, I, I wanna review it for myself, so I can make sure I got a clear understanding. I hear John, but I need to know for myself. I didn't, I didn't believe him.
Okay.
I said, I hear John.
This is, this has been put together, um, based on recommendations from our code enforcement, um, and our city attorney, after full, full review, to make sure that it was compliant with state law, that, but that's about the most I can give you, cause like I say, that's, that's my depth of, of understanding on this as well, is that it complies with state law and, um, it passes our city attorney's review. So, that's all I can give y'all. But I understand your concern, so, that'll be up to-
I would just say that we just, I mean, unless y'all understand it, but I would prefer to, uh, review it so I can get a better understanding of the machines, how they work, what, what's going on with the coin operated machine, what's the difference between the, uh, amusement redemption machine, I don't know, I mean-
That would be a valiant effort, and I would, I would, um, commend you on learning that, cause it's, it's a tough situation, and it changes daily, like, they'll come out with a new regulation where it used to be called amusement redemption, but instead of paying out certain gifts or store prizes, they'll give you iTunes, or, and, and then you can go back the next day and cash it, but they, they, it's a moving target. So, that's about the best I can understand this entire situation.
So, so basically, so these machines, they don't receive monies, they just receive gifts?
They're supposed to. Supposed to. Supposed to.
So, that's, that's what I'm asking, so we-
Can we get a, something from the attorney?
So, we, we, so we, is this considered as gambling, or not?
We've always had the problem as to whether or not they're using them to gamble.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking.
Of course, that's a separate question, one I know here, uh, in the DA's office and in the county attorney's office, we constantly try and investigate them and see if they're paying out in money instead of gifts or something, just more than that. So, you have to watch for that, but that's really a different issue.
That's why we, we really want to-
Basically, it don't change nothing other than, uh, like, uh, nonprofit.
It changes the nonprofit.
Like the Elks, uh, they don't have to pay our fee, uh, cause it's a nonprofit, everybody else still has to pay. All you gas stations has to pay. It's just the nonprofit.
And it aligns the ordinance with-
With the state.
State definition, that way, we can make sure that we're speaking the same definitions-
So, what kind of, what kind of, what kind of payment are they, or did you say they were making?
The, the, the thousand dollars a machine.
So, it's, so the ARM, the ARM licensing and inspection fee is a thousand per machine, uh, for coin operated, it's sixty dollars per machine for the state tax and fifteen dollars for the city tax per machine. Um, and ARMs have to have the coin operator machine certification, and then they have to have an ARM licensing and inspection fee, where we have to go and verify that, um, the numbers align with what they're permitted for and, and everything.
So, I'll make a motion to bring the ordinance language, ordinance code language up to date with the state's, uh, representation of that.
I second.
All approved. So, we have a, we have a motion and a second, uh, for, um, this ordinance, so just to clarify that you, that you're approving this ordinance amendment?
Yes.
Okay.
And I second. All approved? Against?
Staying.
Okay.
Okay.
I get, uh, that's it for tonight. Thank y'all for coming. Uh, get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.